League of Women Voters of North and Central San Mateo County, who will be tonight's moderator.
All yours.
Ah, technology. Hi, I'm just realizing I got this beautiful big screen and it's sort of right in front of me, so I'll try to sit off to the side. I'm Cindy Robbins-Roth, as you heard, I'm with the League of Women Voters of North and Central San Mateo County. Several of my colleagues are here. First, I have some announcements as we get started. Please turn off or silence your cell phones so the candidates don't get interrupted when they're speaking. And to keep a neutral and nonpartisan atmosphere, the candidates agreed to our policy that no literature, clothing, or other materials like buttons associated with a candidate's campaign are permitted in the room or the lobby. And I think the electioneering rules say within 100 feet of the building. My understanding is that the drop, the voting drop boxes are about where that limit is. The MSB buttons are totally okay. This forum is also being recorded and broadcast live to channels 26, 27, and 99, as well as the South San Francisco YouTube channel. The League, the sponsor, and the candidates have agreed to run or link to the recording from beginning to end. There will be no editing in compliance with FCC rules. Unauthorized videos such as cellphone videos are not allowed because the FCC requires that a forum recording must be presented in its entirety. I want to thank the South San Francisco Chamber of Commerce for sponsoring this forum tonight. We really appreciate their interest and their efforts in presenting events that increase voters' knowledge about the candidates and the issues. The League of Women Voters, for those of you not familiar with us, is a national nonpartisan volunteer organization. We welcome people of all ages. Our education mission is to encourage your active and informed participation in government at every level. The League does not endorse or oppose candidates or political parties. Our sole interest is in helping voters gain fair and unbiased information to make an informed decision on or before Election Day. The purpose of a candidate forum is to provide an opportunity for all the voters. Bringing the candidates and the voters together face to face enables the voters to be better informed about their election decisions. So, thank you for coming out to learn more about the candidates and a great array of questions. Those of you who emailed them in, I did get them. They, they are compiled. You will not recognize necessarily your individual questions. Many questions came in with similar info, so they've been... Anyway, I'll talk about that in a minute. All right, tonight you hear from our candidates from the South San Francisco City Council for the South San Francisco City Council. San Mateo now has district elections, so this means candidates are elected by district instead of all at large. There are two candidates for one seat in District Two and two candidates for one seat in District Four. The term of office for all the districts is four years. Again, this event provides a nonpartisan setting for voters to hear all the candidates. It's not for the supporters or opponents of any particular candidate in the audience to demonstrate their own views and preferences. So, I ask that you hold your applause until the end of the forum, when we will thank all the candidates for, for coming. Our candidates running for District Two are Mark Nagalys and Vivian Ramos. And our candidates running for District Four are James Coleman and Avin Sharma. The rules for the forum are as follows. We will start with opening statements. Each candidate will have three minutes for an opening statement. We will then have the question period, and each candidate will have one minute to answer. All the candidates will have an equal time to speak to the question, even if the question maybe originally was addressed to only one candidate. And then we will end with closing statements. Each candidate will have two minutes for a closing statement. Our timekeeper is Linda Jansen up here in the front row. The timekeeper will hold up warning signs when the candidate has one minute. Et voila! Then 30 seconds left at the allotted time. At the end of the time, she will hold up the stop sign until the candidate stops speaking. And candidates, you can finish your sentence, but you can't go on for a paragraph. I, I will politely but firmly stop you. Ushers are, there are ushers. We have Patricia and Sheila, and they are here to get you cards for writing down more questions if you're not hearing a question that you wanted to ask or something occurred to you. They will also, so raise your hand if you didn't already pick up some cards. They'll bring you cards and a pencil. Also, when you fill out the cards, feel free to raise your hand, and they will come take the cards from you and get them up here to me. Please write as legibly as you can, trust me, as somebody who has terrible handwriting. This is why I email in all my questions. And try to keep your questions brief. Questions of a personal nature or any personal invective are out of order. Submissions should be in the form of a question, not a statement, and they must deal with the issues of the relevant office, city council, and, and this election. So Patricia and Sheila, again, raise your hands if you want them to bring you cards, pencils, or pick up your filled-out question cards. For those of you viewing this forum remotely, you can submit questions to questions@lwvnsc.org. I'm supposed to have a piece of paper without address, and I do not. My apologies. But it's, it stands for League of Women Voters, North, Central, and South, North and Central San Mateo County.org. All the questions will come to me as your moderator. I'll sort the questions by subject and try to ensure we cover a variety of topics. We seldom have time to ask all the questions. And this audience and, and the virtual audience have asked a lot of great questions. So hopefully, there were some themes, and I may need to rephrase or combine your questions. But all submitted questions, whether we ask them or not, remain the property of the League of Women Voters. They are never given to the press or any other third party, and we will destroy them after the forum. Okay, it's time for the opening statements. And our candidates chose poker chips when we started. So our very first candidate is James Coleman. You have three minutes for your opening statement.
Thank you so much. Hello, everyone. I can't be more excited to be here with all of you, and thank you so much for, League of Women Voters, for putting on this event. For those of you who don't know me, my name is James Coleman. I was born and raised here in South City, and I graduated from our local public schools. During my childhood, my father suffered a traumatic injury that left him paralyzed from the waist down, and my mother had to work two jobs in order to make ends meet. My upbringing is what inspired me to study regenerative biology, to learn how people can heal, but also study government at Harvard University to learn how we can make our community work for everyone. In 2020, I returned home from college, but not to a graduation party or a fancy cake. I came home in the middle of my junior year to a global pandemic that wreaked havoc throughout our country. I came home to widespread calls for public safety reform, and I came home to a community that sought justice to a status quo that had failed them. I ran to give our community a voice, and I was successfully elected as our city's youngest ever and first openly LGBTQ council member, and I am so honored to be serving this year as your mayor. Over the past four years, South San Francisco has become a city of firsts. The first to pass $5 hazard pay for essential workers during the pandemic. The first to pass a childcare master plan in our county. The first to pass an ordinance against wage theft right in this, right in these chambers a couple weeks ago. And the first to pass a ballot measure to allow our city to deliver on affordable homes faster. That measure passed easily throughout our city by 20 points. Tonight, I want you to listen closely. You will hear incessant fear-mongering over a budget deficit, but in the real world, facts matter. Experience matters, and results matter. We have made record investments into infrastructure. $40 million into our roads, $20 million into affordable homes, $18 million into our parks, and $9 million into a new childcare center. We opened our new library building and started construction on two new pools at Orange Park, and all while bringing back $60 million in, from state, federal, and regional grants. We've maintained a triple-A credit rating with $62 million in reserves, well-prepared to address any fiscal challenges. We have balanced budgets for the past four years, and the next four years will not be any different. I am running for reelection because there is still much work to be done. The need to create affordable neighborhoods and keep our families housed. To invest in childcare and get our kids off the four-year waitlist. To do our part to address the climate crisis, decarbonize our energy systems and build resilient communities. To keep our neighborhoods safe and bring Burri Burri, the state-of-the-art fire station that they deserve. And to make sure that our residents have the highest-quality facilities and world-class amenities, nothing less. In the past four years, we have done incredible things, and together, we can achieve so much more. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next candidate is Vivian Ramos.
Good evening. Tonight, if you are from District Two, I am here to humbly earn your vote. And for those that are not in District Two but in South City, know that when elected, the entire South City residents' interests would come first before mine. I have a unique and exceptional finance and operations background and equally strong background in dedicating my life to public good that lends swell with the city council responsibilities. I am running for three reasons. To turn around a budget deficit, even when your budget is balanced, to prevent cutting vital programs for our children and our senior, ensure public safety and representation for women. In terms of education, I have a bachelor's degree in economics. I finished in three years. I was done by 20. I migrated here in the Bay Area at 20 years old. I went to school full-time and worked full-time and got my MBA in finance. The experience that matters are the following. I was hired as a chief financial officer for Revere Data, a high-potential data firm. When 10 years prior to my hire, there were in structured deficits similar to what we're experiencing here, and of course, I turned that around. I retired from Franklin Templeton, and under me was, under my responsibility, was an oversight of budget of $150 million, a little higher than what we have, we have in South City. And when I was hired for Schwab Funds, I was the assistant treasurer to handle all of the financial health of all of the mutual funds for that firm. No single factor has been more crucial in reducing crime than the partnership between law enforcement and agencies in South City. Look that up, it's in our website. Over the weekend, I was a key organizer to, of a big, the biggest engagement in District Two. Present are our chiefs and members of the police force, the fire department, the California Highway, the CHIPS. And this is sponsored by the Department of Justice that was hosted by our archdiocese. There was a community where we gathered and thanked and honored our beloved police, fire, and responders to keep our, to keep us safe. And by the way, on Thanksgiving, and I, which is coming up, the police or their humanitarian effort is to distribute food for 600 families. I'm the only candidate that mobilizes annually volunteers to help them with that. And during the pandemic, I created an outreach program where in South City is the benefactor. So last year, it was for our unhoused, our unhoused clients, and this year, it was for seniors. So this work is without an elected office, and I will have a significant impact more if I am a city council member. I have more time. So the other part is representation for women. You could see that there's four candidates here, and there's one woman, that's 25%. The city council has five council members. One is a woman, Councilmember Flor Nicole Laszlo, 20%. Do you know that the population of South City represents that we have more than 50% that are women? I thank you so much.
Thank you. Our next candidate is Mark Nagalys.
Thank you and good evening. My name is Mark Nagalys, and I'm proud to be your Westboro council member. In the six years I've been in office, we've done some amazing things. I've been able to secure dollars and resources for Westboro and South San Francisco. This includes $9 million to build a new childcare center in Westboro, $2 million to bring the free shuttle to the district, investing $1 million to repair the walking paths of Westboro Park and adding free Wi-Fi at Westboro Park to help close the digital divide. We opened a new civic center campus and new ballfields at Orange Park last year, and we'll be opening a new aquatic center at the end of next year. I'm proud of what we've accomplished, but there's still more work to be done. Groundbreaking for the new childcare centers in 2025, and the ribbon-cutting is in 2027. As the only council member with young children, I know firsthand how important childcare can be for families. That is why I've started talking to staff about putting together a community forum to find out what residents want to see in their new childcare center. Public safety is an issue I take personally and will always be one of my top priorities. Two years ago, the council approved automatic license plate cameras to be installed. When the church shooting happened at St. Augustine, I immediately left for work and went straight to the church. Thanks to the cameras and our amazing work by our police department, we were able to capture that shooter that same night. In fact, crime rates have dropped in South San Francisco over the past two years. I will continue supporting our public safety officials to keep our city safe. We need to continue to build more affordable housing to address the affordability crisis. This is a personal issue for me because my wife and I almost moved away because rent was getting too expensive. But thanks to our first-time homebuyer's loan program, we were able to buy our first home. I've never forgotten the feeling of almost moving away to the feeling of knowing I was going to stay in my hometown. I want to make sure the other South City families can stay. I led the effort to have South San Francisco recognized by California as a housing-friendly city. We were recently awarded a $28 million grant by the state of California to build more affordable housing. Our city has been resilient, especially after experiencing a worldwide pandemic. I led the effort to bring free COVID vaccines to Old Town to reach our most vulnerable residents. I spearheaded a guaranteed basic income pilot program that gave $500 a month to 160 households for one year and launched our, our city's emergency rental assistance program during the COVID, during COVID that continues to this day and has helped over 200 households. I've been responsive to the needs of our residents, and people are recognizing the work I've done. Many of you know that I listen to all sides of the argument, and I try to find common ground. Experience does matter. I have, I have over 20 years of legislative and policy experience. I've shown time and time again that I deliver for my district and to the city of South San Francisco. Thank you.
Thank you. Our final opening statement is from candidate Avin Sharma.
Thank you. Thank you. My name is Avin Sharma, and I'm running to represent you as the next District Four council member for the city of South San Francisco. I bring real-world experience as a lifelong resident of this city. I'm committed to keeping South City the vibrant, diverse, and beautiful place it is to live, work, and play. My wife and I chose to live here because we love this community. Its close-knit neighborhoods, our great local businesses, and small-town feel that makes South San Francisco special, even in the heart of a major metropolitan area. It is where we bought our home and are raising our two daughters who attend local public schools. I want to ensure that South San Francisco remains a place where families can thrive, where all residents have access to safe neighborhoods, safe streets, and availability of public resources. My parents came here from Fiji in 1995, seeking better opportunities for our family. South San Francisco welcomed us, and I'm grateful for the chance to live out the American dream. I've always been committed to giving back to this community, which is why I volunteer as vice chair for Measure T Bond Oversight Committee and chair of the city's Housing Authority Board. I also bring expertise from my professional background as a finance and business major at Stanford University and a former budget analyst for Town of Hillsborough. I believe this blend of professional experience and local roots uniquely qualifies me to serve on the council. Today, our city is facing an unprecedented budget shortfall despite recent growth and investment. As a result, we're now deeping into reserves. And for working class, it is our 401 in using Measure W sales tax meant for enhanced public safety to cover basic services. These challenges impact quality of services that our residents rely on. Maintaining a balanced budget and making prudent investments in city services is the council's most important job. I'm ready to bring new leadership to ensure our city's finances are managed responsibly and transparently. Thank you.
Thank you, all of our candidates. Now's the time for the candidates to answer your questions. If you have not written your question, please do it now and raise your hand so the ushers can pick them up. Each candidate will have one minute to answer their question. I will vary the order in which the candidates are called on to speak. If a question... For the most part, our policy is not to have questions aimed at any particular candidate, though you may feel that a question resonates with you. Okay, the first question. Start, we'll start with Mr. Coleman. What life experiences have shaped your views?
I definitely mentioned this a bit in my opening statement, but I'll expand. You know, when I was five years old, my father suffered a traumatic injury. He, he fell down the stairs and was left paralyzed and waist down. And my mother had to work two jobs in order to make ends meet. And it really was her, her union job with SEU, UHW that allowed us, our, our family to have healthcare. But you know, when our family could not find childcare, I would often be found in the break room of Kaiser Permanente, which wasn't allowed, but I can talk about it now because she's retired. But what that instilled in me was, was one, a desire to study biology, to learn how people can heal. I wanted to become a doctor. But it also made me want to study government, to learn how we can make our community work for everyone without any family, without any child falling through the cracks. And that has followed me throughout my life, and it's why I am so passionate about childcare in South San Francisco, but also passionate about making sure that we are uplifting all of our working families.
Thank you. Mr. Nagalys, can you answer the same question?
No, I appreciate it. That's a, that's a great question. It's probably two examples. Many of you remember Gene Mullen. Gene Mullen was a high school teacher and also the mayor of South San Francisco. He was my high school teacher at South San Francisco High School. And one of his assignments was to go watch his city council meeting. So not only did I see him during the day, I saw him at night. And that experience actually changed my life because I saw during the city council meeting that one person can make a difference, that he cared about the city, and that if you work really hard, that someone like me can actually be on the city council. The second public experience is almost being, almost moving away. I had a, a conversation with my wife and my young son at the time. I think we needed to move away because it's too expensive to live here. But thanks to the first-time homebuyer's loan, we were able to buy our first home. In San Mateo County, if you make less than $180,000 for a family of four, you're considered low-income. We have to build more affordable housing so that families like mine can stay. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Vivian Ramos, you are up next.
Sure. What shaped me are two things. I went to this country with one luggage and $50 in my pocket. And yet, I was able, I knew that I am able to make it. I was also bed rested. I was disabled for seven months with only one toilet privilege, and yet, I was able to make it. So I believe in hard work. I believe in my faith. And I believe if you actually work together with other people, that you could make it happen. I live with no excuses. And I really have integrity as the value that I could not really be compromised by anyone. So I think if we work together and if you, if you love the city, there is really no excuses in life that you could achieve anything that you want. My mother is a leader as well, and so she is really, to me, a role model where you could be quiet and short and small and Filipino, and yet, you could actually achieve your dreams. Thank you.
Avin Sharma? What life experiences have shaped your views?
As an immigrant from Fiji, life experience hits, it is hard. I've seen my parents work two jobs. That's a learning experience for me at the age of 17. My first job was at Service Merchandise from high school. That's life experience. Through that, I was able to afford to live in South San Francisco. I focus on my education and my career while striving to provide for my family. I want to be part of this community, and I want to give back to South San Francisco for all it has given me. Thank you.
Thank you. Just quick for our folks watching virtually. I understand that the South San Francisco YouTube channel is having a little glitch problem, and I've been asked to let you know that, that the whole recording will be uploaded when they have beat it into submission. Our next question, we're kind of initially focusing on getting to know the candidates more. And we will start with Mark Nagalys. What do you see as your major contributions to South San Francisco, either as an incumbent or a citizen hoping to enter city politics? And when you describe your contributions, please note which were carried out as part of a collaborative effort versus you as an individual?
That's also, these are great questions. I really appreciate it. You know, one of the things that I'm proud of, so we have a free shuttle that goes around South San Francisco. And thanks to former mayor and council member, Cara Mossel, she was able to bring that initial shuttle to South San Francisco. But Westboro never was able to get it. That always bothered me, that in a community like Westboro, where there's a large number of seniors and people who rely on public transportation, we were never able to get it. I serve in the San Mateo County Transportation Authority Board. And what we were able to do, we were able to bring that free shuttle to Westboro. We were able to put $2 million to fund the shuttle for the next two years, and over 1,000 Westboro residents are taking the shuttle. So we're taking cars off the road. That means people are taking the shuttle to Kaiser, to connections to Bart and Caltrain. I even had a mother tell me that it's such a relief for her, knowing that there's a shuttle there because now her son can take the shuttle to get to South San Francisco. Before, she used to have to wake up really early in the morning and drive her son and drop him off in the, in the morning, and we're not sure if he was okay. I am proud of that, bringing the shuttle here.
Ms. Ramos?
So contribution, a few things. So one is, as everybody knows, there was a shooting at St. Augustine. I was there within 30 minutes and actually stepped on, because I was working with the officers, the shattered glasses and the bullets. And I'm there because I'm also the head of communication, and it's just not for the church. We have 17,000 views. So I was waiting for the communication from the police, which I gave to the city council. I knew that they were up for going to be arrested, so I waited until that comes out. And again, in addition to that, it is also mental health. So I went to the city council and, and provide, and asked for what we could provide. And so all the way to ensuring that people are not scared and giving them a sense of, a sense of peace. And again, working with the council and, and our law and forces. I think that's very important because we cannot really tolerate violence of any kind here in South San Francisco.
Thank you. And next, Mr. Sharma?
My contribution to South San Francisco started as a 17-year-old, working at Service Merchandise and, and investing into the city's resources. I currently serve as the Chair for Housing Authority at C Street. I also serve as the vice chair for the Measure T Bond Oversight Committee for the Unified School District. And since I've been 17, I have been supporting small local businesses in the city. And we continue to do so because South City is an important place for me. Thank you.
And Mr. Coleman?
I will say, you know, serving on the city council for the past four years, so much of this is a team effort. And we do have a tremendous team of city staff, as well as a very talented city council that I'm proud to serve with. But if I were to depend on one thing that I would be really proud of, it would, it would have been, you know, in 2021, in the height of the COVID pandemic, we passed a $5 hazard pay ordinance for essential workers, for all of our grocery store and, and food workers. And this is during a time when so many of these workers are, were risking their lives to, to keep our communities running. And we worked together, you know, of course, with our city council, with our local labor unions, and we were able to get this policy passed, putting, you know, thousands of dollars into the pockets of those who needed it most. Similarly, recently, we passed an ordinance, a wage theft ordinance, and you know, And you know, nationwide, wage theft is the largest form of theft in the United States, accounting for billions of dollars in stolen wages every year. And we passed an ordinance that stated that if your company is conducting business in, in South San Francisco construction and you have an outstanding wage theft judgment, you cannot get your final building permits or certificates of occupancy. And what that is, is local policy manifesting as state policy.
Thank you. Okay, on to our next question. There are so many wonderful questions. I'm going to get to as many of them as I can. If elected, will you commit to staying through your term before running for another office? And we will start with Ms. Ramos.
Right now, I don't actually have plans to run for another office. My love is the South San Francisco people. So I am very committed to staying on track with helping everybody, not just my district. I raised three children here. And so out of all of the members, to me, I think I know about childcare, the struggle for that, and actually the success of overcoming it. I want South San Francisco, the way we enjoyed it, to be the legacy for our children. And so to me, I will definitely stay and provide services. Prior to even joining, I have been given the Heart of a Community Award because I help South City Catholic charities include South San Francisco. The, the program that I created, that I launched, the beneficiary is South San Francisco. So even without elective office for the last decade, my heart has been for the people of South City. So no, I'm not going to run for any election while I'm, you know, completing my terms. Such is just not fair and not frankly ethical, I think.
Uh, thank you. Mr. Sharma?
I'm actually honored to be on these dice tonight. And for me to decide to, to do this, it had to be for the right reason. And the only right reason was it had to be about the residents. I connect as a resident. Am I doing this as a resident or as a politician? I can't say a politician because I have my wife there. She needs me at home. So answer a question simply. I have zero intention of seeking any of the office. My heart is here in South San Francisco, serving the residents as a resident.
Thank you. And Mr. Coleman?
Thank you. I am very much committed to being in South San Francisco for the next four years and serving out my term. But this is a weird dig on, on, you know, attempting to run for higher office. I mean, our congressman, Kevin Mullen, began his political career here in the city council of South San Francisco. Then he served us in the state assembly and brought back millions of dollars to infrastructure projects throughout South San Francisco. And now he's in Congress. And so it's very odd for us to, to think like this is some sort of negative thing to run for higher office because we've seen it happen. And when people start in South San Francisco and they serve us in the state legislature or in Congress, they know the issues that South San Francisco residents are facing. And so we should be proud of those who come from South San Francisco and who want to serve in higher office.
Thank you. And finally, Mr. Nagales?
That's also, these are great questions. I always say a promise made is a promise kept, and I plan to serve out my term. I don't plan to run for higher office. My dream is, I'm doing it right now, is to serve on the city council. For people that know me, serving in the city council has been the greatest honor of my life. And being able to pass policies that help my neighbors, my friends, everyday South City residents, that matters more to me than anything in the world. I worked for elected officials on the federal and the state level, and they are fantastic. But what I've learned on the local level is that you tend to sometimes lose that personal touch when the person's away from the district. You can make a difference because you can see what's happening on a local level. You can touch what the problem is and try to resolve it. And I plan to be here for a long time. So, thank you.
Thank you. All right. I'm going to switch topics to another hot topic for the group. The budget. And we will start with Mr. Sharma. I think what it kind of comes down to is your audience is interested in, where did the budget deficit come from? What created it? Do you have experience shepherding a cost substantial project from start to completion? What are your thoughts and plans for how to deal with the deficit? And I think folks are interested, we can spread this into a second question if we need to. I'll, I'll hold off on that. I'll ask about specifics in a second question, since we only have a minute. Sorry. The, the question is, a lot of folks are, have, a lot of questions have been asked about what the genesis of the budget deficit is? And what experience do you bring to solving the budget deficit?
I'm a property owner. I pay a lot of property tax, pay mortgage, paid for a lot of things as a resident. City's largest revenue is through property tax. We have three Costco's, biotech capital of the world. Looking at ten years down the road from now, the general funds will be depleted. Our expenses are greater than the revenue. Regardless, you know, you, we had the VLF, right? The VLF, it's only three, three million that goes to the city. It is distributed among the county. So that, that's basically, that should not be part of it. We have used, what we have done, we have used excess reserves, reserves, working individuals, it is four to one. We have used reserves to fund our expenses, right? Eight million.
Thank you very much. Mr. Coleman?
Sure. So, so the reason, it's hard to put this all into one bullet. But basically, the reason why we have a budget shortfall is the la, the loss of property tax in lieu of VLF funding, which to put it short, the, the state has promised all cities in San Mateo County millions of dollars every year. And now they're trying to take it away to address their own budget shortfall. But through the advocacy of, of myself, the council and leaders all throughout San Mateo County, we're able to get three million of that put back into the state budget. Healthcare premiums, rising seventeen percent in one year. Loss of ARPA funds, the TOT hotel tax revenue not being completely recovered from, from pre-pandemic levels. And I understand that in the world of politics, you know, the, the job of a challenger is to criticize everything that happens. But we have to articulate a path forward and, and what needs to be done differently. In the real world, we need specifics. And I'll be honest, it's very concerning that some with finance backgrounds have fundamental misconceptions about how municipal finance works. But we have a path forward. We placed Measure W on the ballot. We cut five percent across city departments without cutting services and programs. And we're, and we will continue to move forward.
Thank you. Next, Mr. Nagales?
Thank you. So a lot of the, a lot of the points have been made. You know, in the last five, the last five to six years, we've actually had, five of the six years, we've actually had a balanced budget. And actually, this year, because of ARPA funds being taken away, and then the fact that our property in terms of development has actually slowed down, VLF being taken away, our TOT taxes haven't recovered. Those are all things that have been mentioned before. What we're going to do is we're going to pass a business license tax that's going to be more fair to bring back $2.6 million in revenue. There's no cap on that. What we're also going to need to do is we got to spur development as well. Because a large portion of what we were getting in terms of property tax was through our development, through, through affordable housing, developing housing, and also through our R and D. Development has slowed down because the cost of construction has become too expensive. Banks aren't loaning money to develop because they see how hard it is to develop right now because it's too expensive. So thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay, the next topic.
I, I haven't answered.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay. Forgive me. I have the best answer.
It, it is a sad tradition in our. Ms. Ramos?
So it's not five to six years that we have a balanced budget. Actually, every year you will have a balanced budget, just like California. But it doesn't mean you don't have a shortfall. So think about your personal finances. You could borrow money. So to, we were originally about twenty million. But our staff needs to make really cuts, five percent every department. And please, five percent is material. That's $6 million, which means we had to defer hiring, including for our police and fire, about twenty head counts that we need to defer. So the question really is, how did we balance it? It wasn't even enough that we need to get money from the Measure W, which is sales tax, which is allowable. And then we have our unappropriated, you know, undefined that we could use for reserve, which is now left with seventeen million. We used eight of it. Structural budget deficit could go year after year, multi-year. And that's the one that I fixed for the ten-year, multi-year structural deficit. So I do have a plan as to how we could provide that. Our finance department is doing a good job, but we need people with experience that have done it before.
Thank you so much. Please hold your applause till the very end. Next big topic of interest, the municipal services building. A range of questions that basically come down to, do you support or oppose reopening and saving the MSB as an intergenerational community building versus building a new, something new or putting up housing? And what is your plan to either make sure the historic building benefits our citizens? Or if you oppose holding on to it, what's your reasoning? And we will start with Mr. Nagales.
Thank you. I think this is a question that everyone wants to hear. So I've publicly said that I want to take MSB out of the housing element. I've said that already. But there are steps to this because we have to do a financial assessment in terms of what we want to see there. I have said, I want to hear from you what you want to see, right? If you want a senior center or community center, let's figure out how we do that. But we have to be smart about this because if it's going to cost thirty or forty or fifty million dollars to do whatever it needs to do, where is that money going to come from? Is it going to come from our reserves? I think we have to look at what that's going to cost. And also the fact of the matter is, let's say we do pull it. Well, the state can say no. They can overturn our decision. And we've said this multiple times, that we have to find a way to find other developments that's similar to the size of that lot. So that means multiple sites across the city. So if that is what you, your community is telling you you want to do, let's figure out a way to do this. But we also have to be smart financially because it also could cost money, which also means staff time and also fixing that site.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Ramos?
So to me, I think the issue is we haven't listened. So regardless of what we do, I think we've lost trust because it's been two years. So when we say that we're talking to them, we're not listening to them. So the first thing I'm going to do is, when I'm in council, is to probably chair the communication to listen to the pros and the cons. So obviously, to me, it's a matter of how much does it cost to reopen it? And how much is the cost to actually build one? The staff is already looking at taking it out of the, the housing element. And once we have that, then we could, could figure out really what to do with it. I miss it. But at the same time, how much does it cost? So to me, I need more information, but we need to act fast. We need to act with a sense of urgency because regardless if we open or close, we do need more places for seniors to go to.
Thank you. Mr. Sharma?
MSB has played a vital role in my family's life. It's a forward generation of my family that have used it. So it is very personal to me. Now I hear about, you know, cost, right? Cost. It's funny because MSB generation, that MSB side is such a large footprint that I see a multipurpose use of it. We need to have senior services. We need to have, find ways to generate revenues through weddings, programs for residents, youths. And most importantly, I think we need to explore having a performance art center, which will benefit the city as a revenue generating machine, right? And what the city is currently doing is spending eighty thousand for consultant to do what? Right?
Thank you. Mr. Coleman?
Thank you for that. We actually didn't spend eighty thousand, just to put, set the record straight. But I've said it before and I'll say it again. I do not want to sell the MSB. I want to keep it city-owned and for the community. But we have to be financially responsible. The reality is we cannot just reopen the building tomorrow because we need the capital costs of fixing the roof, of doing structural upgrades. If twenty fifteen feasibility studies said it'd cost $7 million, that was almost a decade ago. We need to hire staff and, and consider the operational cost of putting that building back online. And, and so there are two paths forward. We can either choose a path of division, of hurling insults and fear mongering over what might become of that building. Or we can choose a path where we could come together, find a future that makes sense for all of our neighbors, and continue to create incredible things for the South San Francisco community. I choose the latter. And let me tell you, I have had about 1,000 conversations so far with residents all across the districts. And people are sick of the vitriol, they are sick of the harassment, and they want the real work to start.
Thank you. Next question. What can you do or what would you like to do for the disabled people in your district? And we'll start with Ms. Ramos.
I was a disabled myself. As I said, for seven months, I had to pee on my bed and with one toilet privilege. So I, it also falls on their seniors. We might look healthy, just I'm a senior, I'm sixty-two years old, but we could be afflicted. So to me, it is really understanding both seniors and disabled on what services do they really need and that we need to serve them. So I want to look at the programs that we have. I want to enhance the programs. I want to be able to listen to what they need and provide the programs that they need. Hence, as I said during the pandemic, I created, co-launched a outreach program. And one benefit the year before was on the unhoused and the disabled. And the following year, it was the seniors. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Sharma?
Thank you for the great question. I think recently, our city forgot to issue a proclamation for the disability awareness. I will echo what Vivian Ramos just mentioned. I think we really need to understand what current programs are there, how can we manage it better, and what things can we do differently? We need to have an outreach within the community to understand the needs across the board. What can we do better for those residents? Because we haven't done anything yet.
Thank you. Mr. Coleman?
I'm not sure what you mean about not acknowledging disability pride month because we did in July, I know, because I signed it and we presented it to a local resident.
I'm just going to bring you back.
Marie Romero.
To the question.
Thank you. And I have answered the question.
But can you, what can you do? What do you imagine doing for the disabled people in your district?
Thank you. And we did plastic proclamation to address the point made earlier. Now, on to what we can do for a disability community. This is important to me because for most of my life, my father was disabled. And we had to build what would now be considered a JDU at our house because my father could not, could no longer live upstairs. So of course, that means, you know, creating affordable homes for, for those with disabilities and those with developmental disabilities. But it also means making sure that our infrastructure throughout the entire city, our ADA compliant with our curbs, with our local businesses, that all of our city buildings being accessible. And we also need more programming and infrastructure such as all abilities programs and program, sorry, all abilities playgrounds and programs if a parks, rec department and our libraries. And that is something that I'm committed to investing in.
Thank you. And Mr. Nagales?
Thank you. During the pandemic, essential services was what needed, not only by individuals with disability, but for everyone. And what we did in South San Francisco was game changing. We passed guaranteed income. We're the first city to pass guaranteed income, meaning we gave $500 a month to a hundred and sixty households. You know what they did with that money? They used it for essential services. Eighty-seven percent of those individuals used it for rent. Eighty-two percent used it for food. And I doubled. And I double backed on that. I also, we also passed an emergency rental assistance program for those who needed help paying for rent because we knew how difficult it was. And over 200 households actually have used that to stay in South San Francisco. As Mayor Coleman mentioned, we like to say we're the city of first. In fact, the things we've done in terms of South San Francisco, in terms of essential services, the county is replicating it because we have led on issues like this. We're building affordable housing, especially for those with special needs.
Thank you. This, so that we can adjourn on time, this next question will be the last one. We have not been able to get to all the amazing questions, but hopefully you've heard some component of what you most wanted to know about. We will start with Mr. Sharma. The question is, what specific policies or initiatives will you support to enhance growth of small businesses and ensure a thriving business environment?
Supporting small businesses, it's very important to me. I come from District Four by Smarten Final, where small businesses are all over, right? During pandemic, we made a point to support those small businesses. And today, we still support those businesses. What policies can we make to enhance the support? I think we need to engage the resources that we have, either through the Chamber of Commerce, without, without any fees, to support those small businesses. We, we talk about pandemic. I know a lot of businesses have lost, are out of businesses because of failure to get the support from the city at that time to pay rent. RW Drake is one of those. Because my daughter attended the kindergarten there during pandemic.
Thank you. Mr. Coleman?
Right. I think there's a lot that we can do and a lot that we can build upon. So, you know, during my tenure, we started the Economic Advancement Center, which houses the Renaissance Entrepreneurship Center, a local nonprofit that has helped hundreds of, of small businesses get back on track and, and help train hundreds of individuals to start their own small businesses. I think we can continue to partner with our, our local South San Francisco Chamber of Commerce to continue providing programs and, and resources to our local small businesses. I think we can create a revolving loan fund with our city dollars to provide the capital costs for, for individuals who are looking to start their small businesses. I think ultimately, we need to be creating more walkable, mixed-use vibrant communities. I think we need to also provide the density and the people to allow for our small businesses to thrive throughout South San Francisco, and that is something that I am very, very committed to.
Thank you. Mr. Nagales.
Thank you. We've actually, during COVID, provided small business grants to businesses that were struggling. In fact, we gave $5,000 to businesses that applied because we knew that they needed help in terms of struggling businesses, and we helped them stay. In terms of the Economic Advancement Center, that opened during when I was mayor. And to date, over 2,000 individuals have been helped by the Economic Advancement Center. In fact, we even placed 317 individuals in jobs through the Economic Advancement Center, and they're getting paid at least over $22 an hour. I mean, these are things that we're doing to help stimulate the economy because we know that after COVID, people had to pivot and do new things. This community, this city will always back small businesses, and we need to partner with our friends at the Chamber, the community, the economic advancement that we have in the city.
Thank you. And Ms. Ramos.
We need to support small businesses, for those small businesses that endorse me or put my sign. I actually support them, so meaning all of you, please go and support them and use them. For my children to have finished college, between my husband and myself, we need to work between three to four jobs. My husband is a business himself, so we know how hard it is to, to be, really be very entrepreneurial. So we do have the Economic Advance Center, but only 50% are South San Franciscan. Some are, that take advantage of it are from other cities. So we need to promote that. We need to be, provide more incentives to entrepreneurs. We need mentorship programs. We need engagement with our biotech life sciences groups that they provide internship programs. We need those that are successful now or beginning to be successful to mentor other entrepreneurs so that our city could thrive with more small businesses to help those that are just starting to be successful and, and earn their living.
Thank you. Now it is time for our closing statements. Each candidate will have two minutes for a closing statement. So just to keep you on your toes, we're going to reverse the order from that of the opening statement. So up first will be Mr. Sharma.
Together, let's build a better and a brighter future for South San Francisco. If elected, my top priorities will be protecting essential services like public safety, maintaining streets, supporting seniors, services, and ensuring robust after-school care programs for youths and our children. It's crucial that we preserve the character and quality of our neighborhoods even as our city continues to grow. I believe the city should focus on delivering core services, attracting and returning the best city staff, and maintaining the highest standard of services that our residents expect. Public safety must be a priority. We cannot divert funds meant for keeping our community safe to cover budget gaps, be it through Measure W or 2 million for general funds to fund the Economic Advancement Center. With, it's vital that we have engagement with local businesses to expand our local tech space. Our budgets and finances are the heart of what makes our city run smoothly. I believe that with the right leadership, we can get back on track. I'm committed to listening to all your concerns, working with our community, and leading with integrity. I ask for your support so that we can ensure a strong, safe, and thriving South San Francisco. I'm one of you. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Nagales.
First of all, I want to congratulate everyone up here. Running for office is not easy. I just want to recognize everyone up here for, for stepping up and running. As I said before, in the six years since I've been in office, we've accomplished some great things. I've been able to deliver critical dollars to Westboro and South San Francisco for more affordable childcare, for public transportation, improving our parks, and, and building more affordable housing. We weathered the storm of COVID while helping our most vulnerable neighbors with their basic needs. We're still recovering from the effects of COVID on the county, but we have a path forward to close the deficit. I think I've shown that experience does matter. I've been able to accomplish these things with the council by building consensus and listening to our constituents. That's why I've been endorsed by Congressman Kevin Mullen, the former Congresswoman Jackie Speer, members of the state legislature, members of the Board of Supervisors, the city council, many, many Westboro residents, and just recently, our South San Francisco firefighters. My record shows that I've been able to accomplish a lot on behalf of our residents. That's why I believe I deserve another four years in the city council, and I humbly ask for your support. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Ramos.
So first I want to thank the countless volunteers who helped me knock on all 8,000 doors and all the voters that I've had the conversation with. I really thank you. Back to the women representation. Oh, by the way, for endorsement, what I care most about is the endorsement of the people and the endorsement of really two mayors, like I have Carol Matsumoto, who's here, five-time mayor, and another hero, Rich Garberino, four-time mayor, that matters to me with 41 years of combined experience. For the women part, how could, how could we really have in 116 years of history, only three other women that I, my perspective, put in a higher standard? I'm not saying the men are not great because my mentors are men. But how do we put the decisions in the council where the grandmother's interests are there? The single moms, the moms that work very hard and come home and actually need to feed their children? The daughters of the fathers? We need representation for women. We need to right the wrong. When I'm elected to the city council, you could depend on me for three things. One is integrity. It's just an uncompromisable value for me. People follow and work with me because I could be trusted and I put their interest before me. Two, I'm very driven by excellence. I am unstoppable with doing my best. And we join me, you will have to do your best because South San Francisco could only deserve the best. The last one is teamwork. I could not accept that the accomplishment is mine. This is, we could only do this together. When we are together, there's nothing that we cannot do for South City. And when we're united, there is nothing that's truly out of reach. So I'm very, very grateful for this opportunity. From the bottom of my heart, I will, I really wish South San Francisco all the best because elected or not, but I know I'm going to be elected. My heart is yours. You, you will always, I, I will always have your back. And again, thank you for those that are in District Two. Vote me for your council member for District Two. Thank you so much.
And Mr. Coleman?
Thank you so much. This evening, it has become clear that we have two choices, a return to the past or a path forward. I've had thousands of conversations with voters across the district. They are concerned about whether or not their children will get off the preschool waitlist. They are concerned about the rising cost of living and housing. And they are proud that South San Francisco is putting our money where our mouths are and investing millions of dollars into world-class facilities and parks and programs that truly uplift the most marginalized. This campaign is about coming together to tackle our issues head-on, preparing our city for the future and delivering real gains for working families all throughout South City. We can address the affordable housing crisis and keep our families and seniors housed. We can address the climate crisis, protect our environment, and build resilient communities. We can invest in our childcare and education and ensure that every child has what they need to succeed. We can keep our community safe and balance our budgets, just like we have for the past four years. That's why our campaign is the only campaign endorsed by current public safety officials, our sheriff, Christina Corpus, and the South San Francisco Firefighters Union. It's why I'm the only candidate endorsed by teachers, nurses, and healthcare workers, dozens of labor unions representing thousands of working families, environmental organizations like the Sierra Club and 350, the Democratic Party, and dozens of local, state, and federal officials, including our congressman, Kevin Mullen, and our attorney, General Rob Bonta. The next four years will not be defined by political fear mongering or vitriol. It will be defined by the belief that South San Francisco can continue to do incredible things. And together we will. Thank you.
Thank you very much, all of the candidates. You can find additional information about all of the candidates on the League of Women Voters Vote 411 website, and the address is vote411.org. All candidates have been invited to enter their information there and to link to their own websites. The League works diligently to obtain candidate responses so that you can hear from them in their own words. Please have patience and check back again if the information hasn't made it there yet. The League of Women Voters, again, is a nonpartisan political organization, and membership is open to all people ages 16 of age and up. If you're interested in helping your community with forums such as this or other activities that encourage civic education and involvement, brochures are available in the back of the room, the table, as you go out to the right, with information about joining the League. For those of you at home, check the League of Women Voters website. And if you wonder where all those voter registration forms show, come from that you see all over the county, that's us. Remember to vote by Tuesday, November the 5th. Encourage others to vote as well. Ballots have already been made out, mailed out, so if you're already registered, you should have gotten your, your ballot. October 21st is the last day to register and get a non-provisional ballot. Note that you can still register to vote up to the day before the election, but you'll have to submit a provisional ballot. In conclusion, please join me in applauding and thanking the candidates for coming this evening and for running a seat, for a seat on the South San Francisco Council, City Council. I think they liked it. Thank you so much, and thank you to the audience. Amazing questions. More questions than we could get to, but I encourage you, reach out to your candidates and keep asking your, your other questions. Thanks so much. Good night.